Seventeen Board of Supervisors Meeting, please stand for the pledge. Mr. Crowley, would you lead us in the pledge?
Our pledge begins to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for those serving our country, both at home and abroad.
Sorry.
Okay, first up on the agenda is announcements. Ms. Frescatore?
Good evening, fellow board members, residents. I have some announcements on behalf of our Parks and Recreation Department. We have discount tickets available. There's a limited number for discounts for amusement parks and area attraction tickets. They're still available for sale in the office. Prices are listed online. Discount premier movie tickets to Regal, Edwards, United Artists Theater are sold for $9.50, which is quite a bargain. All tickets are sold Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more information and prices, check the website, www.worminstertownship.org. David Ziegler is this year's winner of the Heaviest Tomato Contest with a two-pound, seven-ounce tomato for the contest. Congratulations, Dave. Parks and Rec Department wants to thank HAPRO Federal Savings and all the sponsors and golfers that supported our annual Fall Golf Scramble on Monday, October 9th at Five Ponds. The annual Touch a Truck event will be held on Saturday, October 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Warmminster Community Park. Pack a lunch, bring the kids, grandkids, it's a great event. The fire trucks are there, the police cars, all kinds of Touch a Truck, and the kids can have one-on-one experience with the officers and the emergency workers and our fire department. There are a few tickets left for the annual trip to the Radio City Christmas Spectacular, Saturday, November 18th. Fees are $110 for a resident, $115 for non-resident. It includes motor coach, transportation, second mezzanine ticket, free time in New York City after the show for lunch, shopping, or sightseeing. Seats are going fast, so reserve them now if you're interested. Sales of 2017 dog licenses will close on Friday, October 27th, 2017. As the county has recalled, all licenses by the end of the month. Parks Department continues to take new applications and renewals for the Bark Park. The next Bark Park Safety Education Class will be held on Monday, October 23rd, at 6:30 p.m. For information on any of these items, please contact the Parks and Rec Department or visit them online. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Ms. Frescatore, Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a local adoption event coming this Sunday. It's a Wags Rescue, they've been before us before, I believe. It's actually this Sunday, October 22nd, 2017, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and that is at the Horsham Vet, 971 Horsham Road in Horsham, Pennsylvania. Again, that is this Sunday, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Go to www.wagsrescue.com. That is all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe, Mr. McPhillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to remind everyone, on Saturday, October 28th, from 10:00 to 2:00, the Bucks County District Attorney's Office will be having a countywide drug take-back day. There'll be 50 locations throughout the towns, throughout the county. Two of those locations are going to be right here in Warmminster. One is our police department. The second one's going to be at Shop Right. As you may know, that Bucks County leads the state of Pennsylvania in taking back prescription medications. And you know, and I feel a big part of the reason why is because the communities like Warmminster Township. So far this year, Warmminster's taken back over 500 pounds of prescription medications. That's 500 pounds that's not going to end up in the wrong hands, will not end up in the wrong hands. 500 pounds of prescription medications that won't end up in our water system. And a big, big credit goes to Chief Donnelly and the Warmminster Police Department for all the work that they do with taking back all these prescription medications. So, again, on Saturday, October 28th, stop by the Warmminster Police Department or Shop Right and get rid of your expired or unused prescription medications. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McPhillips. Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to take a few minutes just to welcome the new businesses to town. We had quite a busy month this past two months, actually, August 18th through October 19th. Businesses that are either new to town or recently relocated is China Walk, it's a Chinese restaurant at 390 Jacksonville Road, Trek Bicycle Warmminster at 375 York Road, Oven Brothers, 234 Veterans Way to Take Out Delivery Restaurant, the new Mama Wana at a Mexican restaurant at 277 East County Line Road, Master Lee's Tiger Kicks Martial Arts Karate School at 315 East Street Road, Curves Women's Weight Loss Center at 755 York Road, Unit 202, and Kelly Richard School of Dance has relocated to 600 Lewis Drive, Unit 204. Finch Petroleum, which is a gas station and convenience store, is at 610 York Road. The Centennial School District Administration Building is now officially at 48 Swan Road. Cable Technologies International, which does cable and wireless materials, is at 720 Johnsville Boulevard. Uncle Mike's Frozen Delights at 535 York Road. Hair Creations Studio at 600 Lewis Drive, Suite 205. And Provident Marketing, which does overflow storage and also does corrugated cardboard for cola, cough drops, and auto parts, is at 100 Lewis Drive. As always, we welcome the new businesses and thank the existing businesses for keeping their business and employees in our town. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. It's always good to hear new businesses coming to town. I have a few announcements, starting with, we had an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matter and union negotiations. I have two announcements. One is the Peace Valley Holistic Center is having their annual wine tasting fundraiser this coming Saturday at the Crossings Vineyard up at Washington's Crossing. Those of you who don't know what Peace Valley Holistic Center is about, it's a not-for-profit that they primarily deal with autistic children. And they've had a lot of success. This particular fundraiser is for, they were donated a building by the Bucks County, by the county of Bucks. It was the old forensics lab, which they are converting into storefronts, one being Starbucks, which our Starbucks, as you know, is under renovation. They donated all the equipment from that store to fit this building out with it, and they're going to train autistic children to work there, and Starbucks is going to filter them out into their stores to work. It's a great project. My friends from the Philadelphia Regional Building Trades have volunteered their time to renovate the building. My friends from Ernest Bach &amp; Sons have donated a ton of material and they're storing all the equipment. They went and stripped the store down and storing the materials. So, if you're not doing anything Saturday, take a ride up to Crossings from 1:00 to 5:00 and have a glass of wine, and this is really a great, great cause. And they also have a branch of the Holistic Center that deals with cancer patients, which I had the good fortune of being a survivor, and they helped me, they were tremendous help to me during my treatment. So, I always make it a good point to give them a shout-out and support them. I also had, a week ago Tuesday, the former Vice President, Joe Biden, was in town. Myself, Greg Schuster, Chief Donnelly, Brian Monroe, we had the pleasure of being there for the event, which was sponsored by Joe Cowie. Our friend Joe at Shop Right has raised over $30,000 for the Bo Biden Foundation. So, the Vice President was here to, obviously, to get the check and put on it as presentation. They formed a partnership with Doylestown Hospital to train people to recognize children that have been abused. So, you know, the Bo Biden Foundation's a terrific foundation, and I can't say enough about Joe Cowie over at Shop Right. He's always on the move in this community. You look at the front of his story, he has a list of people that he takes script from to help out all these organizations. So, when he says their community, he really means it. So, thank you, Joe, and it was a real honor to meet the Vice President for all of us. I asked him if he could stick around for a happy hour, and he said no, he had to get back. So, we had a good time with him, though. That was it for my announcements, so I'm going to move on now to presentations. And the first up, we have fellows here from the Archbishop Wood, the state champion Archbishop Wood Basketball Team. I'm going to ask you guys to come up, I have a proclamation to present to you. Guys told me they just came from a workout session. All right, guys, I'm going to read this proclamation to you, and I'd like to introduce you guys. So, this is from the Warmminster Township. Whereas the Archbishop Wood High School Boys Basketball Team won the 2016-17 PIA-A-A Class 5A State Championship by defeating its opponent, Meadville, 73-40. Whereas the Archbishop Wood High School Vikings Basketball Team previously won the PIA-A-A District 12 and Philadelphia Catholic League Titles, the first boys' basketball team in the high school's history to do so. That's terrific. The Vikings concluded their season with a 22-game winning streak and a final record of 28 and 3. The boys' basketball team has always demonstrated teamwork, determination, and leadership throughout their season, while displaying dedication to athletics, scholastic, and personal excellence. The Archbishop Wood High School Vikings Boys Basketball Team has distinguished their school, the people of Warmminster Township, and the Bucks County community. Now, therefore be it resolved, we, the Warmminster Township Board of Supervisors, on this, the 19th day of October, 2017, recognize the many accomplishments and achievements of the Archbishop Wood High School Boys Basketball Team culminating in the 2016-17 Pennsylvania Interscholastic Association Class 5 State Championship. So, congratulations. This is for you, Coach, I'll present this to you. And I'm going to hand it over to the coach. A couple of the fellows here have already told me they've signed to some big league colleges for next year. That's terrific, really great. So, I'll hand it over to you, Coach.
To my left, this is Kyle McNamie. He's a senior at Archbishop Wood. To his left is Andrew Funk, he's also a senior at Archbishop Wood, and he just signed a agreement to go to Bucknell University to play basketball and continue his education. Great school. Andrew LaFond is next to him, he's a senior as well. And next to him is Tyree Pickron. Tyree's a senior as well, and he just signed to go to Quinnipiac University on a full basketball scholarship as well. So, we're very proud of them, not only going on to play basketball at a high level, but going to play basketball at fine academic institutions, because at Wood, we try to combine great athletics with great academics. I think we do, as you can see from where some of our kids go, I think we do a pretty good job at that, and that's really what it's all about. We appreciate very much the honor today. We appreciate all that the township does with the parade and everything else. So, thank you very much for honoring us.
Yes, and Coach, we hope to be able to come to the parade again this year. We hope you guys are able to do a repeat. And thanks for coming in, and good luck to you guys, too. And you guys, good luck at school, too. You've got to pay attention in them schools. All right, that's great. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Coach.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Coach.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Way to go.
Awesome job.
Great school and good luck to you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck at Bucknell.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're good. Now, I'm going to be paranoid about this.
Thanks again, guys, good luck. Hey, when's the first game of the season?
We start down in Washington on December 9th.
December 9th.
We're going to be down there in Washington, D.C.
Okay, so we'll be keeping an eye on you guys this season. We hope to have you back again.
Thank you. Yeah, we're actually participating January 3rd.
Do you want to come up to the podium? Yeah, that'd be great. Real quick, Coach, sure.
Well, on January 5th, we will be traveling down to Wheeling, West Virginia, to participate in Cancer Research Classic, which is also an organization that does a fine job with cancer research, et cetera, trying to, you know, help, and it's a tournament with mostly nationally-ranked basketball teams, but again, with the goal of raising money for cancer research.
That's great. Make sure you let us know about it, we'll do some free airtime for you.
Definitely will. January 5th. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, good luck, guys. Thank you. Okay, next up is our friend Darren Mann, the Brad Fox Run presentation.
Thanks again for your time. My purpose of coming tonight is to give you an update on where we are with the six-annual Officer Brad Fox 5K Run-Walk, and also announce the brand-new Freedom Fest that we're going to do immediately following the 5K. So, before we get started, this past September, just over a month ago, was the fifth anniversary of Brad's death. We have, in our five years, donated approximately $200,000 to charities and Brad's kids, and it's pretty remarkable that in those five years, between us and various other causes, well more than a million dollars has been raised in Brad's name since he was killed. So, it's nice that, from something so god-awful, something positive has come from that. And I'm joined tonight by Brad's parents, as always, Tom and Kathy. So, this year, we'll have our six-annual Officer Brad Fox 5K Run-Walk, and that'll take place April 7th, 2018. It'll take place at Wood again for our third consecutive year. Our first three years, it was held at Warmminster Community Park with great coordination from the township and Parks and Rec. Once the highway was named in Brad's honor, that stretch of York Road between Bristol Road and Street Road, we were given the chance to move it to Archbishop Wood. So, we're going to go there again this year. We've got a great partnership with Wood, they've been extremely helpful. The township continues to be extremely helpful to us. Our course is now U.S. Track and Field Certified, which is a whole process that you go through, but it's a pretty big distinction. So, the 5K course, for the serious diehard runners, it is a USTAF-certified course, and for those that aren't diehard runners, it's still a course, and we want you to come in and run. This year, we're shooting for 1,250 runners. Last year, we had just over 850, so every year, we're just trying to grow a little bit each time. In terms of logistics, it's pretty consistent with what we've done at Wood the past two years. In terms of the 5K, it'll start at 9:00 a.m. The 1K will start immediately after that. Our big news for this year is, we're going to follow that up immediately with the Officer Brad Fox Freedom Fest, and that will begin at approximately 11:30 Saturday morning. And essentially, what it's going to be is, essentially, a veterans expo. We have speakers, nationally-recognized speakers, from groups like the Pat Tillman Foundation, some of the Tillman scholars that are in the area, they're going to come to speak. We're coordinating with several national veteran support groups, groups like Mission 22, who you'll see them on the next slide, but they essentially have programs to help decrease the number of daily suicides of veterans, because right now, unfortunately, we have between 20 and 22 veterans a day that are committing suicide. And so, the goal of our, the goal of the Freedom Fest will be multiple. We're going to try to get as many active-duty folks and as many veterans as we can to our site. We want to recognize those who are currently serving. If we were trying to get the names of people who are currently serving overseas, bring their families in, honor them, honor those who are maybe home right now from serving, as well as honoring veterans of all ages. And we are also, essentially, it's going to be an expo, and so, if you were at our event the past two years, we used the boy's side of the school, for those who've been around long enough. We used the boy's side, and this year, we're going to use the full front face of Wood. And so, the other side essentially will be areas for a multitude of veterans groups. So, we're going to focus on job placement, PTSD, essentially, anything that we can do to support the military. There's not enough, frankly, that we can do to help these people out, especially when they're going over there and serving multiple tours and coming home. So, anything that we can do to honor them, to support them, continue to help them, that's our goal. And as I said, we're currently scheduling several speakers to come and throughout that period of time, to give speeches and talk about their experiences and things that they do to help our veterans and our military. We anticipate it's going to run until about 2:00 in the afternoon. This is our first go at it, so we don't want to go too crazy and make it too long. We're anticipating it's going to be a successful event next year. We'll hope to go to that a little bit more, but we're very excited. We have a whole separate team that's working on that, and it's going to be a huge success. This year, the schedule of dispersments for the money that we raise, typically, the way we do this is, we meet with Brad's family and we collect suggestions from our committee and other people about who we can donate to. And then, between Brad's parents, Brad's widow, Brad's brother, and several other people, we talk about different opportunities that we can help people, and the kinds of groups that Brad would support. And so, again, this year, we're going to support the Brad Fox Scholarship Fund at Tenet. It is, right now, one of the biggest scholarships that's awarded every year at Tenet. We're announcing this year a Brad Fox Scholarship at Archbishop Wood High School as well. And that will be awarded to an incoming freshman. The details are still being worked out, but essentially, it would be a chunk of money that they get every year of the four years that they go to Wood, assuming that they maintain a certain level of, a certain standard that we and Wood have agreed upon. And we're focusing on military families for that. If we don't have applications for military families, we would obviously award it to someone else, but that's new this year. We're going to donate to Mission 22, who I mentioned earlier, and their mission is threefold. First, it's to decrease the suicide rate of veterans and just raise awareness of that issue. You know, that's a pretty grave issue, that we were losing so many of these people every day. Also, they have several veteran treatment programs that they coordinate, and they're also working on a War at Home Memorial, which is an art memorial that they're trying to put together, and so, we're going to kick some money their way. We're also going to donate money to Officer Brian Rickards, who is an Abingdon Township K-9 police officer, maybe detective, but I could be wrong about that. He's currently battling ALS, and anybody who's familiar with that, that's a hell of a fight by itself, and so, we're going to support him and his family. And then, the Warmminster BFW Post, right there on Lewis Drive, they've been really good to us, and we're going to, you know, throw some money to them to help them out as well. And then, the actual dispersment percentage and things like that, we work out with our Board of Directors, but all of those people will get the money that we raise this year. And as always, none of us get paid. It's, you know, most of what we get is donated, so almost all of the money that we raise goes right to that group that's listed there. The other thing that we're working on this year is an idea that I think I brought up at the last time that we were here, and it's just an ongoing military first responders recognition program. We're going to pay to produce these window clings that local businesses can put in their window, and essentially, the message is, if you serve the community, you serve the country, come in, and we're going to take care of you. We're not looking for these businesses to donate money to us, we're just looking for them to help out the people that help the rest of us. And so, we'll cover the cost of producing them. It's up to the business to decide what they want to do. So, you know, if they think it's in their best interest to put this sign out and give veterans a dollar off, that's their decision. But in areas where I've seen this program, they tend to give an extra 20%, an extra 25%. They do something over and above, and so, we're going to have this program in place. We're going to roll this out at the start of next year, once we start going out and hitting businesses up for sponsorships, but it's not tied to the sponsorships whatsoever. These will be free. We can leave them here at the Township Building, if anyone wants to pick them up here, but it's just, you know, another way that we can say thank you to the people that are protecting our community and our country. And just one shameless plug, because you guys let me come up here, so I'm taking it. We have a Bad Moms Movie Night. We have a Bad Moms Movie Night coming up November 8th at the movie Tavern in Flower Town. It's a great girls' night out. It's, the tickets are $40 apiece, which seems a little bit high, but you get dinner, you get drinks, you get some popcorn, you get a brown leather recliner, you get wait service, you can buy booze during the movie if you want to. Santa Claus will be there, you can get your picture taken with Santa Claus. And $5 of every ticket from that is going to be donated to wreaths across America, which, if you're not familiar with them, they're a nonprofit group that raises money so that every headstone in every national cemetery has a wreath at Christmas. And it's an absolutely breathtaking scene, if you've ever been there. And one of the cemeteries that they support is Washington Crossing National Cemetery, which is where Brad is buried. So, we've currently sold out of two auditoriums. We have a third one open, we have about 100 tickets left. You can go to our Facebook page for information, you can send us an email. It's going to be a great girls' night out. I'll be there working, but, you know, for you ladies, it's a great girls' night out. So, if you have any information, again, go to our Facebook page, or you can send us an email. And finally, I just want to thank all of you. Greg, you've been super helpful. Karen Whitney and Kathy from the Parks and Rec have been by our side the past couple of months as we've been throwing these ideas together, and a huge part of why this works is because we work so well with all of you, and so, you know, on behalf of the Fox family, our whole committee, really, thank you very much for your continued support.
Well, thank you, Darren. You do a great job with that.
Thank you.
People I haven't seen you have been very busy.
I've been busy.
Yeah, you have, yes. And do you still have the Brad Fox menu over at Steam, too? Is that still relevant?
I actually just talked to Martin, probably about two weeks ago, they're going to do the Brad Fox menu again.
Right.
So, you know, we'll have to get over there and probably have a drink and talk to Martin.
Yeah, I've been keeping it local lately, but I'll go.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll definitely go over and support it.
Yeah, just make sure you wear your Brad Fox t-shirts when you go in these places, so they know. But yeah, Steam is great. We have a meeting with Mission Barbecue in Warmminster, they're going to support us.
Oh, great.
We have a new partnership with the UPS Store in Warmminster. I just talked to them this week. So, we've got a lot of businesses, the new AAA, they've been extremely generous to us as well, so.
Right.
You know, we're really hitting the pavement and just trying to raise some money for some good people.
Good causes. Oh, no, it's terrific, terrific. I know you dedicate a lot of time, you're to be commended for the time you do.
Thank you.
Warmminster ladies usually pretty generous, too.
I don't think we've been there yet.
Okay.
But since you said it in public, you're going to hit the mark.
Okay, because they've.
And I'm going to drop your name.
Go ahead.
And I'm coming back next month if it doesn't work out.
Frescatore.
Frescatore, that's right.
Yeah, so.
Better business work.
Yeah. So, do anybody have any questions on anything?
You're pretty well covered. Look forward to the event.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Darren. Thanks, Tom and Kathy Fox, too, for coming out. Okay, next up on presentations is Tim Hagy, the Warmminster Municipal Authority Update. Tim, how are you?
Good, thank you. Thank you for having me. With me tonight, three board members are here, Larry Forrest, Ken Penko, our chairman, and George Lewis. Our solicitor engineer here, Joe Knowles, our engineer, and Robert Nemiroff, our solicitor. So, if I can't handle it, one of these gentlemen, fine gentleman can handle it, any questions. I have four quick discussion points to talk to you about tonight. First is water quality. As all of you should know, our customers, we've sent out communication to our customers, 100% of our water currently is coming from the Forest Park Facility. It's a state-of-the-art water treatment plant. They use the latest membrane filtration technology. So, the water that our customers are getting is top-quality, and that leads us to the second point, cost of water. When we had to go to the Forest Park Water Supply to replace our wells, that water is much more expensive. We used to be, in a survey of the local area, we used to be the second lowest. We're currently about a median cost. That's not a consolation to anyone who is used to paying what they used to pay, but to what they have to pay today, the current cost for our customers is about 100, or it's about $1.15 per day. It's still pretty reasonable. We deliver it to the house under pressure for about seven-tenths of a cent per gallon. When you think of that, think of it in those terms, it's a little easier. It's still a big change, we understand that, but it wasn't a decision that we took lightly, but we needed to do that for water quality issues. Third issue is capital projects. We have a very aggressive capital budget. This year, we had a capital budget to replace over two miles of water main. We were doing some other work, some Penn Vest items, and that work is actually going to start probably in January. We replaced almost two miles of sewer main, we lined it, we renewed it. We've upgraded some sewer pump stations. And next year, in 2018, we're going to do about the same. We're going to do two more miles, a little more than two miles of water main. We're going to do about two miles of sewer main renewal. We're going to do a forced main. That's in the preliminary capital budget so far. And those streets that we're going to do water main projects on, we'll send letters to those residents. We've communicated that to township staff, which roads they are. We're going to put them on our website, and when the contractor's ready to go, we'll have further communication to those people who are affected. In the end, those streets, we pave those roads when we're done, as you know. So, we look forward to getting those projects done in 2018. Fourth item is current event issues. Yesterday, I went to Penn Vest, they gave us, authorized us for a loan of 11 and 1/2 million. You might have seen that in today's intel. We are still actively working for a grant. We don't want our customers to pay any more dollars for this contamination cleanup that they didn't cause, so we are actively working on that. Representative O'Neill is actively working on that. He's working with administration to get funding for. He's working with administration to get funding for us. We're hopeful that that moves forward. We're also doing a special flushing. You should have gotten a notice early this week or late last week of an update to our customers where we are with the intake of surface water. It's a little bit different chemistry, and we're having a little bit of discoloration issues that we're trying to clean up with an additional flushing. So, we started that today. We notified a lot more customers than we normally would for the area that we're working on. We got calls from outside that area, so we're going to modify our calls tomorrow in the areas that we work on. But we're going to do what we need to do to provide quality water to our customers. With that, I or the team will be happy to take any questions if you have any.
If you happen to have a list of the streets you'll be doing with the sewer and.
The water main.
Water mains.
Yes.
Yes. You do, so you already have a schedule in place.
Right. And we shared that with staff, your staff.
Okay, okay.
And how do you decide which streets you're going to do?
The streets that we do are some of the most problematic for us, that have more water main breaks on. We've concentrated in the northwestern corner of the township, the second part of 2018's project. We're going to hopscotch a little bit around to some problem roads that we have. Oakwood Drive's been a problem for us, Marion, Magnolia, and Bloomfield. So, they're going to be outside of that area that we've concentrated on. But those streets that have had multiple breaks and/or, if the township happens to be working there, doing a stormwater project, something like that, we try and coordinate that as best we can, so we don't rip up the street twice and we have to repave it again.
I have, one of the things I get a lot from residents, they still don't trust the water. And so, some of the things that I, I guess the questions that I get is, one, that they don't feel, I guess it's more just of a distrust than a question, but they don't feel that it's going to be safe until, like, the pipes are replaced. So, they feel, and this is, I've heard this from multiple people, that there's some sort of, you know, residual PFO, PFOS in the piping system, you know, regardless of how much clean water runs through that. Do you want to address that?
The issue with PFOS and PFO, one of the problems with that, with cleaning that up, is it really likes to be in water. So, the contamination from the two bases, it just, it stays in the aquifer, it moves around in the aquifer, but it really is attracted to water. It's not attracted to pipe. So, those thoughts that it's attracted to the pipe is not founded in science, but I understand that people have a question about that residual effect.
Right.
We are aggressively replacing pipe. We have some old cast iron pipe in the township. We do a lot more capital work than most water authorities our size.
The other thing I'd like, I mean, I thought the letter that you guys put out was very good. I was very happy to see that. So, I think you'd already answered this question, but this is something else that I get routinely, is that the wells that you have the filters on, the three, we bring in two back online, right?
Three back online.
It's all three. Someone said, "Well, you know, are they really, really tested?" And, you know, so of course, I tell them when I speak to them, you run, I mean, probably, I don't know how much water through them, but for months before you provide them back to the community. So, do you just kind of want to address?
Yeah, what we do is, we run a lot of water through them. We've ran a lot of water through those wells that we've been running, we've been running some of them for over a year, and we have an understanding of how long that media lasts before it has breakthrough. These items, PFOS, PFO, are not a regulated compound. It's a health advisory limit. It makes things a little bit more complicated. I actually don't need to test for them anymore, other than the testing that we had to do for UCMR3. Now, on the wells that we put treatment systems on, DEP has asked us and required us, we do testing twice a month on those. So, that's pretty aggressive, the schedule, to test for those items, and we will do that on each of those three wells twice a month.
I know this is a bit of a technical question, but have you figured out the lifespan of the charcoal filtration, the filtration, the charcoal itself? I remember we talked about that before.
Yes.
And what's the lifetime of that before?
Well, it really depends on the well, Mark, because different wells have different concentrations of PFOS and PFO. Some have very low, and those carbon filters are going to last a long time. So, it really depends on the well. But we know at the well, how long each well lasts when it breaks through the first filter, then we're going to change it out before it even reaches the second filter.
Because there's double, right, there's a double filtration with each one.
Correct.
That's important to know, that there's a double.
Correct.
How long will you continue to test down the road?
We're going to test, currently, our requirements are twice a month, and I don't see that changing.
No, but I mean, how long, like, how many months, how many years, like, how long down the road would you continue to do, is what you're saying?
We will continue to do it as long as that those treatment vessels are on the well.
Okay, all right, just so we can reassure residents, because people ask. Thank you.
Sure.
I do actually have a Facebook question, so, out of the presses. Now, this isn't live, I'm joking, but someone did want to know if, that they can go out and buy a carbon filter and install on their water service as a backup, for whatever reason the township's, I guess your filters fail at some point. So, you want to address that?
They certainly can do that. Carbon filtration is the gold standard for water treatment, if they want to polish it further. People do that now, and I think I've mentioned it to some of you before, we don't like drinking the chlorine in the water. We have to have the chlorine disinfected in the water, and you run it through carbon, and it removes that chlorine. So, it polishes it, there's nothing wrong with doing that, but I have no problem drinking the water, the existing water, I wouldn't have any problem giving it to my children, family. It's very high-quality water.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Anyone from the public have any questions? Sure, Larry, come on up, Larry.
My name's Larry Makieas, I live over on Clifford Street in Meadowood, and first of all, I want to congratulate Tim for the aggressive work that he's done with the water problem here. I think we're ahead of probably everybody in the region for getting top-quality water in spite of the cost. In fact, I've stopped buying bottled water. I am one of the people that got, one of the cancers that you get from this. My wife has a problem, my father-in-law died working at Johnsville. So, it's touched my family pretty hard. I'd like to know how much of the water that's being supplied now compared to what's being bought from North Wales is in our water supply?
100%. Tim, can you, so folks at home can hear, the microphone.
Larry, 100% of the water that we supply right now is from the Forest Park plant.
So, none of it is coming from the wells with good filters on?
Correct. By the end of the month, we're going to have three of our wells that have been tested, the filtration systems on, we're going to bring them back online. But, so everyone knows, we have a contract with North Wales to purchase the vast majority of our water, so we will continue to do that. We have to purchase 2.5 million gallons a day. Our average use is 3 million gallons. So, the letter that went out said that approximately 84% of our water, after those three wells are brought on, will be supplied by North Wales, remainder from our treated wells.
So, we will have no need for other water that's untreated if we have an emergency, like a drought?
We always plan for emergencies.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But with three wells back online, that would make up the difference that we needed.
Yes, between 2.5 and 3, yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Larry. Anyone else from the public have any questions for the authority while they're here? Glad to take them. Anyone else from the board?
Just given the circumstances, and no one wants to be in the circumstances. Tim, I think you and your board are doing an excellent job. I mean, communication is key, and you're doing an excellent job communicating with the public. Thank you for what you and your board are doing.
Thank you very much.
I know, I know we get out of the chute a little rough with all this, but you guys took the appropriate action. You did very aggressively and took the appropriate action to protect the public. Thank you. If there's nothing else from the board or the public, I'm going to move on to our next agenda item then, which is the John McCarelli, PFM Potential Debt Insurance. John, go on up.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, WA and NA members.
Pardon me from reading from my notes a little bit, but I have a lot of detail that I would like to cover, and I don't want to miss anything. So, the township has two capital projects that are planned to be running simultaneously. They're both long-term projects that will result in land acquisition, property remediation, and reclamation, and land improvements to ultimately improve the township's land holdings to better serve the needs of the township's mission. Due to being capital projects, there's a need for capital financing. The first project is the acquisition of the Shenandoah Woods, a land parcel from the US Navy, along with the deconstruction of existing houses, utilities such as roads, sidewalks, curbs, sewer and water lines, and possibly a stormwater basin. The land will be reclaimed and added to the township park system and the properties adjacent to the Warminster Community Park. The cost of the Shenandoah Woods project is estimated at $3 million, including a $1 million purchase price, and approximately $2 million in reclamation and remediation costs. The township, through the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority, is intending to apply for a grant to help for the remediation costs, and that grant amount is anticipated at $250,000. The second project is actually a group of park grant projects for improvements at the Warminster Community Park. The township has been awarded three grants already. The first is a Bucks County Open Space Grant, in the amount of $647,000. 75% of that has been received already, but there's 25% reimbursement upon project completion. The second is a DCNR grant for $500,000. 25% will be provided upfront with 75% reimbursement upon project completion. And the third is a RACP grant for $1,765,000. There are zero upfront provided. It is a grant reimbursement-type grant, so we will be submitting for reimbursements as work gets done, but we have to pay the bills for the work and then submit for reimbursement. So, the grant awards total $2,912,000, and so the majority of the grant financing is through reimbursement. So, essentially, we have to pay money out and then apply to get reimbursed.
It's basically a line of credit.
It's like a line of credit, but there's one significant, I mean, you can think of it as a line of credit, but there's one significant difference, and I think I'll let Jamie explain to that. So, capital financing is warranted because both projects represent property assets for the township and qualify for long-term financing. The need for the capital financing is to have funds available to pay for the work when needed, and subsequently repay the debt over either 15 or 20-year payback period. In the Shenandoah Woods project, the majority of the financing needed is to be self-funded, with possibly some grant support. The park grant projects have a substantial funding stream that's in the wings, but the township needs to spend the money first to be able to apply for the reimbursements. So, for the park projects, it's essentially a cash flow issue, necessitated for our capital financing. Each project has a timeline that projects the work to begin in 2018 and be completed by the end of 2019. So, for your consideration, we're proposing a financing that would allow the township to draw down funds on a general obligation note. Key benefits of the drawdown feature is that the township would only draw funds as needed, and interest would accrue only on the outstanding debt, much like the line of credit. You only are paying interest on what's outstanding. As opposed to the traditional bond financing where you get all your money, and this would be a $7 million note, you get all your money upfront and the interest starts right away. So, another feature of the drawdown is, we're looking that we would have early prepayment without any penalty, so as we would receive grant money, we can use that to pay down the debt, too. So, you know, our goal is to keep the interest costs as minimum as possible. The township has contracted with PFM for financial advisory assistance for this financing. PFM brings to the table substantial experience in public sector capital financing, and their assistance so far has been in determining the qualifications of the debt, structuring the debt, and advising on financing options for the two projects. So, moving forward, we're seeking the board's approval to have PFM issue an RFP for the financing, and to provide guidance in evaluating the proposals. The timeframe would be to issue the RFP in time to allow for analysis and to make a recommendation for approval of a winning bid and approval of a debt ordinance at the November board meeting. So, here tonight from PFM is Jamie Schlesinger, who's a senior consultant to present their financing proposals. I also like to mention that part of the PFM team is Zach Williard, also a senior consultant, and Ben Kaptenstein, a senior analyst. Greg Schuster and I have been working with the PFM team and are confident of their skills and their abilities to fulfill this as a successful capital financing. So, does everybody have one of these presentations?
Can I just ask you one question, John?
Yes.
Why is the interest expense so much higher for Shenandoah Woods than it is for Park Projects? Is it because of their parks, but Shenandoah Woods is going to be basically open space?
Part of it would be the repayment when we get grant money for the Park Project.
Oh, okay, this is prior.
Basically, a shorter term.
Gotcha, gotcha.
For Shenandoah Woods, you'll be paying Shenandoah Woods off for 15 or 20 years, whereas the Park Projects conceivably could be paid off within two years, three years, when those grants come in.
Okay.
That's why there's substantially less interest with those.
I see, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Good question. A good question.
Yeah, I'd like to turn it over to Jamie Schlesinger.
Thanks.
Well, frankly, I don't have to say anything. I think John did a great job explaining really what the plan here is. So, as John mentioned, you have two separate projects that you ultimately need a lot of flexibility in a type of transaction, given the potential grants, the timing it takes to do the projects, and ultimately, having the ability to prepay it early. So, that really opened the door for using a bank loan from either a local or regional bank to solicit and get us this money. Because of the timing of the projects, and because of the timing with which you get the grants, and when you need to spend the money, you have to upfront that. So, we are suggesting, based on discussions with the administration, to request a $7 million borrowing. The expectation certainly is, by, once it's all said and done, you have a far less, smaller transaction, but we want to have as much money as possible to do the projects, and again, use your grant money as it comes in to allow you to fund the projects. So, that's really the gist of it. It gives us all the flexibility in the world while you do these particular projects. So, with that said, you'll see in our presentation, I'll only skip through a few of these since John hit on the high notes here, but really, page one gives you an idea of where the interest rate environment is. We're actually at a good point. You know, we hit the all-time low in interest rates last July. We had a little bit of a spike at the end of the year. Things have calmed down a little bit, and we've been in a pretty good place right now. So, local and regional banks are quite aggressive in interest rates that they're offering us. Our viewpoint here is, we're going to look at a 15-year option and a 20-year option. That's not normal when we spit out RFPs. Frankly, we usually pick one set of maturity, but we're going to do two here because we want to work out some details related to some of your grants.
Let me explain that just briefly, and this is specific to the RACP grant. That program has traditionally required a 20-year loan. Why it does this, I really don't know, but they require a 20-year payback period. However, they have in the past gone as low as 15 years. So, what we're doing is doing the 15-year and the 20-year option. We're also asking to get permission to use the 15-year option, so we have both options available to us. But for going out for the RFP, since right now we don't have that permission yet, we're going for both the 15 and the 20-year options.
Yes, ultimately, as you would expect, the goal here is to have that information in hand prior to you approving hopefully this ordinance in a month. So, that said, again, the bells and whistles are key here. We want to have that ability to prepay it, we want the ability to have the drawdown loan, and ultimately, that'll keep the interest costs. And you asked a great question with regard to the payback. It ultimately comes down to the expectation of how quickly you're going to spend the money, and depending on which side it is. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to structure one big loan. So, what we're going to do is we're going to structure one big loan. We're going to have it broken out between the Shenandoah Woods project and the park projects, and that'll allow you, for your budgetary purposes, to build it in. We've made some expectations on what the draws will be and up for your budget. So, that's really the goal here.
John, do you happen to know, percentage-wise, how much we're going to get in grant money and how much money we're going to actually have to pay out?
John can answer that better than I can.
I'm asking for an estimate at this point if you have it.
John, can you come to the microphone so folks can hear you?
For the Shenandoah Woods, it's, you know, we're anticipating a possible $250,000 grant out of $3 million.
Right.
For the park grant projects...
I thought it was way right.
We're looking to get $2.9 million financing of three little plus projects. So, the park grants, projects, there's different ones. They're all at the community park, mostly financed by grants. But the key here for us to get money is to be able to borrow money, to pay the costs, and then get reimbursed. Whereas on the Shenandoah Woods project, it's really, we're buying a property and we're making improvements to that property...
Right.
...with some smaller amount of financial support.
Okay.
And if I could expand a little bit on Shenandoah Woods, just so everyone's clear on all the expenditures. I know we've gone over this a few times. I just want to go over it again. There are a number of costs associated with that. First, there's the acquisition of $1 million. The $250,000 grant which we applied for, we hope we'll get. We certainly cannot count on it, but that's what John is referring to. Another piece is the required payment to Aldi. That was based, though, on the old $25, $26 million valuation. Mr. Savona is in discussions with Aldi to get to a more appropriate number there. You also have the environmental remediation that the Development Authority would conduct. This anticipates us fronting that money for them, but however, we anticipate getting a 75% grant back for that. That's typical of these environmental remediations. And the last piece would be the...or sorry, the second to last piece would be the reclamation, the removal of the infrastructure, some of the roads, the buildings, et cetera. We would also go for any kind of grant for that. There's not many grants that would help with that, but that's another area we can go for grants. And finally, we have the option to include as part of this project, if funding allows, that stormwater basin that we've been talking about for years. That basin is part of our MS4 plan, so whether it gets done in this project or another project, it'll eventually get done. So, those are all the pieces of Shenandoah. It is a little more fluid than the park projects. The park project is very defined. We know what the...we have good estimates on the costs. We know what the grants are. The Shenandoah Woods project still has yet to be bid, and we don't know the full amount of grants that we are going to receive.
Great.
But we are planning through this to fund whatever eventuality there is.
Karen and Kathy are experts at this. I'm talking about Parks and Rec Department. They're really good. If you need any kind of advice or anything, they're really good at this.
So, again...
What's I have to say? Dan, have a key. The payment to Aldi, what are we anticipating on ballpark? I know you're negotiating...
Worst-case scenario is the legally binding agreement would require a payment of $350,000. But that, again, was scaled to an overall property value of around $25 million. So, I haven't...we haven't pinpointed it exactly, but I'm hoping to reduce it proportionately.
And is it too late in the game, I mean, to have the Navy subtract that instead of us paying it?
Yeah, that was agreed to from the very beginning.
Not an option.
Yeah. When the property was divided up, because of the way the McKinney Act works, Aldi was given an entitlement to a piece of that property.
Yeah.
So, and that's already set in stone, and that was approved by HUD and by the Navy. So, the only way to keep them from occupying the property was to buy their interest out. So, those contracts were signed years ago, and the only way we can really maneuver around it now at this point, the Navy's not going to entertain offsetting for those costs because they're selling their piece of property. They're not worried about what Aldi sells their piece for. So, that's why I've approached their board, and they are amenable to having that discussion, but they wanted to get a little further down the road in this process till we started putting numbers together. As I told them, quite frankly, the township's got a lot of expense now that we weren't anticipating. So, they've indicated their willingness to work with us, and I'm hoping that we can get to an actual bottom-line number probably by the end of the year.
Yeah, and I understand it's the idea, better off having the Navy pay than us pay.
Oh, I totally agree with you, but that's just not the lens they view it through.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you.
So, again, at this point, you know, we're asking you to consider allowing us to solicit proposals for $7 million. A couple of things in addition that you're going to be considering tonight. One is a reimbursement resolution. Essentially, that's a...and you'll probably talk about it later. That concept is if you do spend any money prior to settlement, you can reimburse yourselves with the proceeds of the loan. So, it gives us some added flexibility from some of the things that maybe happen between now and then. So, we expect that this settlement would occur by the end of the year. And again, there's a purchase price I know that's going to be coming up by the end of the year as well, so that's one of the reasons for that.
Jamie, just walk through for me.
Yeah.
You're talking about an ordinance adoption in November. That's pretty aggressive. What's your schedule?
Yeah, so the timeline here, we're...
Considering the advertising requirements and everything else.
Well, advertisement's a little bit, so I'll go through a couple of things for you on that. So, number one, if you say go tonight, we're going to send out the RFPs probably tomorrow or Monday. That will give the local and regional banks a couple of weeks or so to review your financials. You know, you guys are very strong credit rating, so ultimately, we'll get those proposals back. We'll do the evaluation of the 15- and 20-year option. We will come back and discuss that with your administration. Hopefully, by then, we'll have some additional information with regard to the term. We'll be ready to go to come to the board meeting in November. The advertisement side of this, because of the Local Government Unit Dead Act, it doesn't require that normal, traditional timing that you need for advertising. It's a three-day prior to handle that. So, obviously, we'll know where we're going by that point. You can do the advertisement in that period of time. We can leave it open enough that if by chance you say no, you could do it at a future meeting. Look, we'll talk about that in the future. But given the timeline and given where you need the money for the potential purchase, we do want to try to get this done by the November meeting. So, the good news here is because we're not doing bonds, there's no official statement, there's no rating agency, all the work is really just getting the proposals back, doing the evaluation, making sure we got our Ts crossed and Is dotted. So, we're going to work pretty hard during Thanksgiving, but we'll get it done.
Third week in November. Third week, that's over-targeting, yes.
Yes, yeah. Well, we've got a lot of this done in advance at this point, so again, we'll probably shoot this out the next day or so.
And Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, things are being set up in a manner that so if that November 16th meeting doesn't resolve this issue, it would still be up for action at a December meeting?
It would be based on how we figure out the advertising, but it would be a three or 30-day ad that you'll probably set up at that point. If you had to do a special meeting, you'd probably have to, you know, maybe do something else different. But there's some flexibility because the banks will have them hold the rates for a little period of time to allow us to make any additional decisions if necessary. That's the good news about the loan. Ultimately, we'll be able to hold things for a little period of time. All right, just to kind of go through some numbers real quick, just for your verification, page four and page five really kind of give you two different scenarios. I think when you originally asked your question with regard to the final borrowing amount, I think this looks more in line with what we expect. This is page four. This is a $3 million scenario. Again, we're going to ask to go out for seven, but if we think it's going to be somewhere around three after all these grants are utilized. This assumes that all the money is drawn at settlement. So, this is a, we consider a pretty conservative assumption because we know we're not going to draw the money at settlement. We structured the debt to allow for a little bit of a phase-in while you're doing the project. So, incrementally, it's going to be a rather low incremental payment in the first couple of years. You can see on the green, which is the 15-year option, and the blue, they're about $50,000 in 2018 and $80,000 in 2019. Again, these are assumptions on the rates we'll get. And from there, it's going to jump up to the principal and interest portion, which could be somewhere around $280,000 for the 15-year option and about $225,000 for the 20-year option. So, I think this is a good example of what things will look like once it's all said and done. That said, we do want to show the other scenario, which is the $7 million option. So, again, this is what the banks will see. This is ultimately what the Commonwealth will see. So, if we move forward, have the $7 million loan, this is what will get approved. Because of the way the terms work, if it becomes less, we'll re-amortize the loan at that period of time to make it a lower amount. So, this is the expectation of what the debt service would be if you received no grants at all. Questions?
One question on page four. The proposed debt, how much, $50,000 first year, $80,000 second? Is this broken down into monthly payments of 12 months?
They are going to be semi-annually, the payments.
Semi-annually?
Yeah, but this is the annual payment here. This is what you're going to pay for the year.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, from a dollars and cents, you'll pay one principal payment in a year and then two semi-annual interest payments. But again, this is the total debt service.
Okay.
And then really, the last two pages, I won't go through them. We did calculate out some expected interest amounts, what in real life would it look like if you make your purchase price payment and make some of your draws based on some expectations. I think these are some good numbers to use in your budget, but again, we'd like to show you worst-case scenario on the previous pages. I know you've asked some good questions here. Does anyone have any other questions?
Your assumed interest rate is two and a half?
Two and a half right now.
Which is also pretty conservative.
We hope so, yeah. I mean, we, you know, obviously, the competitive process will prove out what it'll be. What we'll probably end up getting, just for everyone's knowledge, because it's a 15-year option or a 20-year option, more than likely, we won't get a 15- or 20-year fixed rate. We'll probably get a fixed rate for five, seven, or 10 years, depending on, obviously, what you expect. On a five-year term, you might get a lower interest rate. In each of these scenarios, there's going to be a maximum interest rate, so that's the worst you're going to pay. So, that'll be built in. Our analysis will prove out what we think is the best alternative. It could be the seven-year option. It could be the 10-year option. Again, maybe we get a 15-year fixed rate. More than likely, it'll be one of those. So, mathematically, we'll calculate all those numbers and give you a good example and a good analysis at that time. But this made an assumption of a seven-year fixed rate, as a side note. Any other questions?
Anyone have anything? Jamie?
The RFPs, if they go out tomorrow?
Hopefully tomorrow. Yeah, either tomorrow or Monday.
And then what are you anticipating?
They'll be back in early November.
Okay.
Anyone from the public have any questions for Jamie? John, what do you got?
Mark, I just had a comment you mentioned about line of credit. So, the drawdown is similar to a line of credit, like if anybody has a home equity line of credit, you have it aligned, and he can borrow, and then he can get, keep going back up to that limit. The difference with this is that it's a $7 million maximum, and as we draw down, it's a declining balance. So, if we drew one, if we drew down $2 million, we can now get $5 million more.
Doesn't go back up to seven.
We can't go back up to seven. So, I wanted to point that out.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
You're not allowed to have a revolving line of credit.
Right, thank you for clarifying.
But that's the concept. That's why we're going for the $7 million because that's the most you're going to get.
And the draw periods are two years.
Two years, two years.
Just so I understand the numbers that I'm looking at.
Sure.
Just go back to page four under the 15-year. I mean, when you're looking at these annual numbers, $50,000, $80,000, $284, I mean, those are, and it says proposed debt service, that's how much would be coming out of our annual budget to pay back down the debt.
Yes.
$284, and then if you go to the $7 million, assuming we don't get any grant money back and assuming that you were to use the entire, I'm sorry, the $7 million, the $668...
That's correct. That's the runway. That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, right, and as I should point out, the current balance of the debt of the township is about $3.5 million. So, you know, ultimately, if you didn't get any money, you're, you know, you're doubling, more than doubling what your outstanding debt is, but it costs money to do projects, unfortunately.
I have a question for Greg. I know this is a really important project, and most of our residents are ecstatic that we acquired Shenandoah Woods, but in the budget crisis that we're going to be facing, can we really afford to do this? That's my concern.
So, affordability is a question really of what level of services and what level of taxation you are willing to accept. At some point, there's going to have to be a trade-off. As these costs are incurred, whether it be here or in other areas, there's either going to have to be a tax increase to pay for that or a matching offset somewhere else. We can work with you for either way, but is this manageable? Well, yeah, it's manageable, but it's going to necessitate some choices. I'm sorry, I can't be more direct, but it's really going to come down to a policy decision on how are you going to pay for certain things.
You're asking tonight to put out an RFP. I mean, my only concern is, I mean, I would want this to be somehow integrated with our budget discussion. I mean, we're going into budget season, so, you know, I definitely want to put it into context with respect to that, but putting out an RFP isn't tying us down to anything. Is that correct?
No, the only time you're tied down is when the ordinance comes after we receive proposals and you approve that ordinance.
Right.
Now, that said, it is a drawdown loan. I mean, I would think if you do the ordinance and accept the proposals, you're going to, you know, do the projects, but, you know, that is the decision you'll have to make. So, you have about a month ultimately is the answer.
Right. That's what I'm saying. It's not today.
Right, stone, okay.
You'll have a much stronger sense of where the numbers are, what the actual proposal is, what the actual debt service is, and just because I work with a lot of municipalities and Greg has the same experience, this doesn't necessarily...debt service under the Second Class Township Code is not necessarily designed to hamper your general fund. There's a whole separate classification of millage that the General Assembly has allowed you to charge to pay for debt like this so that you trade it off from your general fund. You're not going to use this payment to hit the cap of your general fund millage, and that creates problems for you down the road. So, there are ways that you structure this that it doesn't necessarily impact directly your general fund by putting it in a separate classification.
That was great news to hear. Thank you for that explanation because it's a lot to take in, you know, in one evening, like make a snap decision here, but to know we have time and to know that we have some options here makes me feel more comfortable.
You have time. You also have additional options, you know, if the board, I mean, you've already committed to purchase Shenandoah Woods. I mean, that ship has sailed. But if the board is reticent about drawing down money to pay for other things, we could certainly look at not doing the reclamation and pulling out all those buildings. It's certainly more desirable to do that now. Same thing with the...
It's a dangerous situation, too, not dinner.
Yeah, it's, if we were, I would much rather have the Redevelopment Authority do the environmental remediation, pull out all the infrastructure, and turn it over to us the way a park should be than put that on the back burner. That is definitely preferable. But if there are financing concerns, we can certainly talk about scaling that back at the next meeting or even beyond, because even if you were to authorize this drawdown, we are still not committed to taking out any more money than we want to. So, that would be additional conversations we would have to have also with, between us and with the RDA.
That's a whole nother discussion. I mean, I would never want to assume liability for those buildings over there.
I agree.
And once we transe take title of that property, we own them, so.
Totally agree.
That's why, that's why I said, yeah. It's dangerous.
Especially given that eight years ago, this board declared the property blighted.
Right.
And now, you're going to take title to a blighted area. You almost have a fiduciary responsibility to take care of cleaning it up.
But I don't want to get sidetracked. It's a discussion for another time. Anyone else have anything for Jamie? Any from the public have any questions? Okay, Jamie, well, thanks for the presentation. We have to take a couple of actions here.
Thanks, John.
Yes, thank you. Oh, is that right? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, the board's required to take a few actions on this, so I'm going to ask for a motion to authorize the advertisement of the debt RFP in ordinance. Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, is there any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the other action we have to take is the, need a motion to the drawdown reimbursement resolution, two oh one seven dash thirty-two for debt reimbursement. Is there a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Mr. Crowley, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Monroe, any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That wraps up. Thank you, John. Next up is Chief Donnelly with the BPAAR presentation, and I'm sure the chief's going to tell us what that stands for.
Pass these down, please. Good evening. How are you tonight? I'll make it quick, so you can get on, get moving. I'll make it quick. The acronym changes from point to point. But basically, it started out as the Ben Salem Police Assistance in Active Recovery, or in Recovery. Right now, Warrington's taking it over, we've taken it over, Montgomery, Middletown has shown a vested interest, and I believe Upper South. But basically, it'll become the Bucks County Police Assistance in Recovery Program. If you're not familiar with Warrminster Township and what we've done, in September alone, we had ten drug overdoses in the township in the thirty-day period, or thirty-one day, thirty-day period in September. Two were heroin, one was heroin, cocaine, marijuana, and fentanyl. One was heroin and fentanyl, four were prescription, one was alcohol, and one was ibuprofen, if you believe that. That's a lot of ibuprofen to get this. Basically, what the BPAIR program is, is that it's a pilot program that we started at Ben Salem. It's a derivative of the Angel Program out of Massachusetts. Basically, since police departments are almost the only twenty-four-hour operation in most townships, any addicted person on any substance can come to that police station, come up, say they have a problem. The involvement with the officer is usually limited. It's to make sure they're not wanted by another jurisdiction, and to make sure they're not carrying anything, any weapons, any narcotics. If they have narcotics or paraphernalia, we'll take it off of them, charge them with it. At that point, as long as they are in, they want to come into this program, and they voluntarily come in. At that point, we contact one volunteer, which they call navigator, and transportation. And we hook them up with a navigator who's trained through the county, and they get them to, during the day, it will most likely be Aldi up in Doylestown, or on a twenty-four-hour basis, it would be Gredenza down in Bristol Township, down by Lower Bucks Hospital. All we promise, or all we ensure them, is that they'll get an intake hearing. We won't prom, we can't promise them a bed, we don't, I mean, there's greater powers than us that come into play, like insurance, and opportunity, and space, and things like that. But it'll help them, someone who's looking to get into recovery, this will be their first step. And we're open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. They come in, they see my clerk, or they pick up the phone, they call us, they'll get a police officer, and we'll go from there. Our biggest hurdle, the meeting I went to was in February. Ben Salem's been doing this for eighteen months. They've had forty people come through their program. Warrington started a couple of months ago, they've had one. So it's slowly catching on. Our biggest problem is transportation, getting them to and from Bristol, if we have to take them down to Bristol, because if you're trying to get to Bristol from Warrminster at five o'clock in the afternoon, it's an hour and a half, two-hour round trip. And, yeah, you basically have to get the volunteer in, the volunteer or the navigator hooked up with the addicted person, get them down to Bristol, and then get the navigator back. And my problem was transportation. Right now, I'm currently working with All Threes or the cab company in the area to get them. The other problem was financial problems. Fortunately, my phone rang two weeks ago, and the Caitlin Murphy Foundation out of Warrington called me and said, "Well, here you have this problem, we're going to solve it for you." And they're going to donate the five, up to five hundred dollars to get it started, to get our transportation online and get it going. Up to Aldi is really not a problem. If worse comes to worse, we can get them in a police car, but when you talk to counselors, some addicted persons have an allergic reaction to the back of police cars. And unfortunately, that's what I got right now, to get them up there. But to get them in a cab, and get them up there, and have them with a navigator who understands their blight, and understands their problems, and keep them focused or in line on what they want to do, is something we're very interested in. Because what happens? It prevents them from going to Giant, Walmart, Kohl's, committing a crime, buying narcotics, which is another crime, and possibly ODing on another hot bag, or pill, or something along those lines. The other thing, in expansion of this, is, and I gave you a little brochure, it actually just came in tonight. I borrowed it from Warrington, so, except it's got our graphics on it right now. But we'll be putting out this brochure to anybody and everybody. We go to an overdose, we'll give them there. We'll give them to parents, we'll give them to whoever wants them. And I'll show them how to get in this. If we, the other part is that, when we arrest people, we have a pretty good idea of when we arrest people, whether they have tendencies toward an addiction problem or not. Our friends at Drug and Alcohol over at six hundred Lewis Drive gave us this little packet. This will be in our cell block, we bring somebody in, we have an understanding or inclination that they may be addicted. We'll give them this. If they're released right from our cell block, they can walk right around to the front of the police station, and we'll get them a volunteer or navigator, and get them into an intake hearing, so that they can take that step and start moving towards recovery. The next question I usually get, and I've gotten it a couple of times, is, "Well, who's this for?" Technically, right now, it's for any, it's any Warrminster, most of the townships are doing it for their residents. I understand at Warrminster, we have a lot of people come in going, talking to drug and alcohol people over at six hundred Lewis Drive. It's open to any Bucks County resident. And since we're not getting our door knocked down, I would open up to any Bucks County resident. Since we're close to Montgomery County, there's some things we have to do if we wind up having a Montgomery County resident come to us. We'll get them the help, might take us a little bit longer, you know, because we have to get them through their actions over in Montgomery County. But it's for anybody over the age of eighteen that finds themselves addicted or feels themselves addicted. So the obvious question after that is, "What if they're not eighteen? What do you do?" Well, there's Act fifty-three. Act fifty-three through Pennsylvania law, we can give the petition, or get the parents hooked up with drug and alcohol, and they can go to juvenile court and get a petition. A petition against a juvenile if they refuse to go to treatment. Get them up there, get an intake, and they can be ordered by the court to go to treatment, I think up to thirty days. We're also developing a pamphlet for that, for the frantic mothers and fathers that come in here and say, "What do I do with my child?" And that program's for children from twelve to seventeen. So hopefully, we don't find anybody addicted below twelve. But in that case, we'd probably go through juvenile court also. So that's the program in a nutshell. Please, to the viewing public, don't blow up my phone tomorrow, because when I'm ready to go for volunteers, I will put it out on Facebook, I'll get it out to the township, I will let you know. But as I, as this program started leaking out, my phone started blowing up. "I'll volunteer, I'll volunteer, I'll do this." There's still a lot of logistical issues going on, and how we're going to do it. I have to train my cops up on this, since it's, this funding just came through for us. But we're ready to step off and go. I mean, I've been sitting on this program for better part of eight months, six months, and ready to push it out. I just have to get the people who I need to do it, trained up to do it, and get online with Aldi and Gredenza. So with that, I'll turn it over to any questions? Is that five minutes, four minutes?
Have as long as you'd like. You're heavily armed.
All right, no problem.
Great program, chief, and I think it's really, it's really needed, and I applaud you for rolling this program out.
Well, like I said, the best part of police work is you can steal and not get arrested. So I stole this strictly from Ben Salem, who stole it from Massachusetts. So I took their great ideas and made them my own. So I appreciate it.
It's an excellent initiative.
All right.
Came from Ben Salem?
Yeah, Fred Haron.
Fred Haron, okay.
Yeah, Fred Haron, the king of ideas.
McVee, have any?
Who's running for the fourth vice president of the IACP, so vote.
Yes.
Vote early and often.
Yes.
For Fred, so if you're a member. So he'll appreciate that commercial.
Very good.
Not going any further, I'll go back in my hole.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, chief. Okay, next up is public comment. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items. Subject to a five-minute guideline recognized by the chair, is there any public comment? Sure, please come on up, tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Betty Ioneri, and I live on Beach Street. I was listening to the local channel, and I heard you talking about the veterans and how you wanted to help them in any way you can. I'd like to know, how does the messages get on the, is that the character generator, is that what you call it?
Yes.
Do people pay to have that on? Because we have all the township advertisements, but nothing for the VFW. Is there a way they could get on there without?
I'm sorry, you're talking on the cable access?
Yes.
Yeah, anyone who has a community message they want to get out, please contact me, and we'll be happy to work with them.
And you'll get it out?
Yeah, absolutely. Especially if it's a veterans issue, absolutely.
That's kind of why I'm here tonight. They have a senior dance at the VFW. A lot of the residents are not aware of that. It's more like ages fifty-plus. And if you like music of that kind, I guess you can be of any age to come. But it's the VFW post on sixty-four ninety-three, the post, and six forty-five Lewis Drive, Warrminster. They have a live band every Friday night from eight to eleven, and this Friday is one of my favorites, but they're all good. They have free snacks, coffee and tea at the dance. You can purchase other beverages if you choose to do so. And the doors open at six PM. They also have dinner for those who want to come, and the dinner is before the dance. When the dance starts, dinner's over. The dinner is eight dollars a person, and they have dance tickets that you can purchase at the door. They're fifteen dollars a person. And you can just come and dance, or just relax, listen to the band. And it's smoke-free, and it's a lot of lovely people there. It's a fun-filled atmosphere. And a lot of people, they see VFW, think it's just for the veterans. It's open to the public. So I just wanted to get that out there, and I have a flyer here.
Yeah, be glad to take it. Now, is this every Friday night?
Every Friday.
Is that right?
Eight, eight o'clock, it starts. The dance starts at eight. Dinner starts somewheres between, I guess, six, six-thirty. They're usually done at seven-thirty, clear the tables, and ready to dance. And if you can't dance, come out anyhow, because the music is fantastic.
Who's there this Friday? You said it's one of your favorites.
Yes, it's a band called Point Blank. If you look online, you might find a heavy metal band, that's not them.
Oh, my God.
It's not them, they're the Point Blank Five, and they have a five-piece, or they have a lead singer, a woman singer. And they all sing, and they have a keyboardist, and they have two guitars, and they have the drums. And it's just fabulous.
My wife and I make our rounds on Friday nights, we'll make sure we stop in on a Friday.
Get in this Friday.
It's a great event.
Could you please give that to Amanda, and also, Amanda, can you maybe get her contact information? So if we have any follow-up questions, we can get those answers, and we'll work on getting that up.
They're very receptive. I took my mother-in-law years ago, and she had a blast. You know, gentlemen danced with her, and they put her at a table, and people talked to her, so it's a really nice event to go to.
Awesome. All right, thanks for coming in with that. If you don't have anything else, we're going to move on. Well, you have to go to the microphone, you have to go to the microphone, so the folks at home can hear you.
I'd just like to say, it's for singles and couples, and they have a few line dances. And they have old music like Patsy Cline, and they have music up to the current time. You know, it's a lively, fun-filled time. So I hope to see anybody come out that can and enjoy themselves.
Thanks for coming in with that.
Thank you.
And I'd like to also say thank you to the board. You are carrying your meetings in a very professional manner.
Oh, thank you. We appreciate that.
Doesn't matter whether you're Democrat, Republican, no matter what you do behind the scenes, you all get along, and I'm very proud of you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and it's a long one. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, it is rather lengthy due to the time between our meetings. Consent agenda for this evening. Item A is the minutes from your September seventh, two thousand seventeen, meeting. Item B is a coordination agreement with the Police Chiefs Association of Bucks County. What is trying to be accomplished here is the police departments all getting together and applying for grants as a group on behalf of the departments, so that they can hopefully get larger grants and have more success. Item C is a settlement agreement for a grievance filed by one of the unions. This was discussed in the executive session. Item D is a limited waiver to the alcohol policy for a one-night event, which would be a fundraiser conducted by the Friends of the Library. It would be a wine and cheese event. So this would be applied for, through the Liquor Control Board, the special occasion permit, and waiving for this specific instance. The township policy, which would prohibit alcohol at the library. Item E is Resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-four. At the last meeting, you actually put six members on the municipal subcommittee, so this is officially expanding the membership from five members to six members. Item F is Resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-five. The allocation of the foreign fire insurance taxes to the Volunteer Firefighter Relief Association. This is a straight allocation of funds that's passing through us over to the fire departments or fire companies, as it does every year. Item G, Resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-six. This is the funding that we have received for the state, the pension funding, for both the uniform and non-uniform defined benefit plans. This is the allocation of those funds into the appropriate plans. This is done every year. Item H is Resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-seven. This is a reciprocal easement, which I'm going to briefly turn over to Mr. Savona, so he can just touch on that regarding how this impacts Lidl.
Just as the board recalls, when you approved the Lidl Shopping Center Land Development Plan at seven hundred York Road, one of the conditions of approval in both the original approval and then the amended approval was that there would be reciprocal easements between the property owners at seven hundred York Road and the next-door property at six oh six York Road. Those easements have been prepared, they are ready for execution by the parties. However, in doing the title work and the search, we discovered that, and if you flip to Exhibit A on the actual resolution under the easement description, there's a tiny little piece of property that actually is owned by Warrminster Township. It's a residual piece that was from some taking for a roadway back in nineteen Yaden. But the easement that crosses between the two properties actually passes over a portion of that little sliver of property. So in order to allow them to fulfill the conditions of the approval, they need our consent to the reciprocal easement, which, when you approve this resolution, it will authorize the township administration to sign the easement document. It won't be signed until they actually do the closing on the property, it'll be sometime in the future. But this will authorize the execution of that easement on behalf of the board.
Thank you. Item I is the payment number four, the final payment to Reamstown Excavating for the curb ramp installation associated with the two thousand seventeen road pavement, paving program as recommended by the engineer. Item J is release number one, the final release from the escrow for three sixty-six Hawthorne Street in the amount of forty-nine thousand and forty-six dollars, as recommended by the engineer. Item K is ARL slash Penn State, nine ninety-five Newtown Road, release number one, the final, from the escrow in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars, as recommended by the engineer. Item L, three fifty Newtown Court, release number four from the escrow in the amount of forty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars, as recommended by the engineer. Item M, Lot Five Franklin Corporate Center, two oh one Veterans Way, release number two from the escrow account in the amount of ninety-nine thousand and thirty-one dollars, as recommended by the engineer. Item N, the station at Bucks East, release number two from the escrow in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars, as recommended by the engineer. Item O, Jacksonville Plaza Land Development, release number two from the escrow in the amount of sixteen thousand seventy-one dollars, as recommended by the engineer. Item P, Septa Parking Lot Expansion, release number two from the escrow in the amount of ninety-two thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars, as recommended by the engineer. Item Q, twelve fifty-six Beverly Road, released from the legal and engineering escrow in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-three cents, plus any accrued interest, as recommended by the engineer. Item R is four fifty York Road, eighteen thousand four hundred and ten dollars, plus accrued interest from the legal and engineering escrow. The further breakdown of that eighteen thousand can be seen on the agenda. And item S is Penn State ARL Legal and Engineering Escrow, release the amount of four thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, ninety cents, plus any accrued interest.
That was a long one.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion.
Ms. Fraskett, or is there a second? Ms. Frescatore, is there a second? Mr. McPhillips, any questions on the consent agenda? Comments from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up, Treasurers Report. Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This month, we have a supplemental bill list dated September twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of one million two hundred and three thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. We have a bill list dated October nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of one million eight hundred and forty-seven thousand two hundred and five dollars and eighty cents. And that is a total of three million fifty-one thousand one hundred and forty dollars and seventy-two cents. There's also August transfers in the amount of forty thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-four cents.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, any questions on the bill list? Any comments from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. August financial statement. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The August financial statement was not read at the last meeting, discussed last meeting because it came a little bit late. I did send it out to you with some commentary, both from myself and the customary commentary from Linda Major. Nothing major to report. We are still waiting for the September financials. Unfortunately, we don't have that for this meeting. Now, this is all part of the transition to the new accounting system. We're hopefully to get back on track very soon so we can get back in the same rhythm that we were. But I still haven't seen anything contrary to our budget for two thousand seventeen that we need to have any discussions over. Everything is going according to plan. In fact, at the last August report, you can see that the expenditures were fifty-four percent of the total budget, where you would expect at this point, at that point in the year, sixty-seven percent. So things are trending positively. We'll see where we end of the year. Don't forget, we did budget for a little over six hundred thousand dollar deficit. We'll have to see how things end up with, on the expenditure and the revenue side. We still have a number of active projects out there. So building permit fees, other fees are still coming in. So we will see how we end up.
We may end up all.
We may. We may. We'll have to wait and see how the year progresses.
Fingers crossed.
And I will get the, we'll email out the September financials as soon as we have them.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? No? Okay. Next up is the Resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-eight, which is a budget amendment number three. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the third budget amendment of the year. I would anticipate a final budget amendment before the close of the year. For this, most of what we're doing here is budget neutral. For the, and you have all this in your packet, of course. On the general fund, I'm not going to go over every single line item because there's some just minor movement between certain line items. But to call out a couple larger things, you will see reallocation of a staff member. We did have a position which was paid half by the fire marshal, half by public works. That's been consolidated into finance. So that is just being transferred from those line items into the appropriate line items. You'll also see a transfer of thirty thousand dollars. We're pretty much done with stormwater projects for this current year. So we're taking thirty thousand dollars out of stormwater, moving that over to building, maintenance, and repair as they continue to do a good amount of cleanup over at the Bristol Road Complex. For the Parks and Rec Fund, they are appropriating an additional sixty thousand dollars from the tree escrow. This is directly related to the Admiral Ashbore and the extensive amount of work that they have had to do over the last few months to deal with that infestation. The Capital Reserve Fund, as I previously discussed with you, we are getting a little bit ahead for the replacement program for the vehicles in the police department. We are purchasing a detective vehicle that is a much lower cost than a standard police cruiser. It doesn't have to be outfitted in the same manner. So we are taking a little bit of the fund balance out of the Capital Reserve Fund. And we have ten thousand dollars from another stream, I believe it was a task force?
FBI.
The FBI? Okay, the FBI Task Force that we're getting those funds from for the purchase of that vehicle. Liquid fuels, there's also some reallocation. We had some funds in the inappropriate line items. We're doing, they're doing traffic light work. The monies were allocated in the streetlight line item and equipment and supplies. So just moving that money over to the appropriate line item to work on the traffic lights. And those are the recommended amendments, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Okay. Sorry, I thought I heard something. Is there a motion to accept Resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-eight?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. There's no unfinished business tonight. So we'll move right on to new business, which item A is a waiver of land development seventeen dash two, four forty-four Jacksonville Road. Mr. Savona.
Mr. Chairman, the matter before the board this evening is a waiver of land development for the properties located at four thirty and four forty-four Jacksonville Road. The applicant is J.G. Petrucci Company, Inc. of Asbury, New Jersey. The applicant proposes to construct a nineteen-hundred-and-twenty-four square-foot driveway connecting the properties between four thirty Jacksonville Road and the Septa property to provide access to an existing traffic signal. Also converts a portion of the rear parking lot of four forty-four Jacksonville Road, approximately three thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, into a playground with the installation of two sheds, fencing, and striping for the parking stalls. The tax parcels involved are forty-nine oh oh nine oh two oh 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 four, that's four thirty Jacksonville Road, forty-nine zero zero nine zero two zero, that's four 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 Jacksonville Road, and forty-nine zero zero nine zero one nine dash zero zero two, that's one hundred Station Road. All the properties are located in the I.O. Industrial Office zoning district. The request for waiver of land development has been reviewed by the township engineer who issued a review letter dated October eleventh, two thousand seventeen. It has also been reviewed by the township zoning officer, who issued his letter on August, October the twelfth, two thousand seventeen. The applicant also received a variance from the zoning hearing board by way of a decision and order entered on August the eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. The application for waiver has been recommended by the office of the township engineer. The applicant's present, and you want to make any presentation or explanation to the board, feel free to do so.
Please come up to the podium.
You did such a great job of explaining. I'm not sure I would need to say anything.
Just say please.
Other than, you know, we are in receipt.
And you are and who you represent?
Excuse me?
Who are?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Carl Janekka. I'm with Van Cleef Engineering Associates. Dominic Baker is with me from J.G. Petrucci. He's the owner and applicant. Make it super quick. We are in receipt of the review letters. We've had some brief conversation with the township engineer's office, and we believe they're all minor technical items. We intend to revise the plans, and they're all will comply. Unless there's something specifically you want to discuss in the letters, that's all I really have to say. The introduction was pretty much done for me.
The only comment I have, as we were going back and forth, I think Mr. Reeves was talking to Karen. They talk a lot on all the projects about comment going to PennDOT. They felt they didn't need to. That property never accessed that signal before. So we have an approved PennDOT signal permit plan. And if PennDOT doesn't require improvements, obviously, we won't require any improvements. But we are looking for their sign off from that. That protects the township from having additional properties, additional trips from that property going to that signal that weren't anticipated when PennDOT approved that. So that's the only reason we're not looking to any gotcha. We want some improvements. I just want to make that clear on the record, that we're just looking for PennDOT sign off, and they typically will do that. I know you have an old traffic report that was submitted. We're following with that. If you want to submit that to PennDOT just to prove the volumes that were anticipated, and that's it. It won't go any further.
Yep, understood. And I believe the applicant's traffic engineer is going to contact Fran Haney just to touch base.
Fran will work with you.
Right. Just to be sure he either wants something, or if he wants to see a report or additional report, well, whatever.
The other thing is, if they have a concern or something, please just reach out to our office.
Absolutely.
And we'll help out. So that's all I have.
Is there any? I guess I'll ask for the motion, then we'll, if there's any discussion or questions. Is there a motion to grant a waiver of land development seventeen slash oh two for four forty-four Jacksonville?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second? Second? Mr. Crowley? Okay, is there any discussion from the board or any questions from the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the waiver would be, it's recommended that the waiver would be granted subject to the applicant's compliance as indicated with the recommendations of the township engineer, township zoning officer, as indicated in their review letters, and the recommendations of the fire marshal and his review letter of October the eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, and compliance with the conditions of approval by the zoning hearing board and their adjudication dated August the eighteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions from the board? I just have a comment that we were over at the TOD two a couple weeks ago, and you guys did a wonderful job on that development. Really, really well done. And that exit that you put out, the extra exit out of the train stations, terrific. Really well done.
Beautiful.
Nice work. Great addition to our township. Thank you. With that, is there anything from the public? Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, too.
Okay. Next up is authorization to advertise a solicitation ordinance advertisement. Mr. Savona.
Mr. Chairman, this ordinance has been prepared in collaboration with the Assistant Township Manager, the Chief of Police, and myself. The effect of this ordinance would be to repeal the township's current licensing of transient retail business, which is sort of a mishmash that smashes together both the transient retail business licensing and the door-to-door solicitation licensing. In order to make the regulations clearer and a little easier to administer and enforce, this ordinance would take those and pull them apart. So Part One of the ordinance creates a separate and distinct process for the licensing of transient retail businesses. And this creates a new Part Two that deals specifically with the licensing of door-to-door solicitation that would be handled by and administered by the police department. I believe the ordinance has been reviewed by the township administration and the chief, and our recommendation would be for the board to authorize advertisement of the ordinance to amend the transient retail business and solicitation ordinance.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize and advertise a solicitation ordinance advertisement?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatore, is there any other comments or questions from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up is rejection of snow removal services bid. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did go out to bid for snow removal services. Unfortunately, we received a single bid. And although the price was competitive, they did bid on the wrong option. They didn't bid on option number one. So in discussions with the solicitor, we felt the best action to take was to reject the bid. We have already reissued the RFP. We're confident we can get someone in here to assist with the snow removal. But at this point, the only action that we really can take right now is to reject the sole erroneous bid.
Is there a motion to reject the snow removal bid? Mr. Crowley, second?
Mr. McPhillips? Do you have a question?
We had one bid?
Just one bid, yes. It was a little surprising. We weren't expecting five bids, but only one was somewhat surprising.
No neighborhood kids?
They couldn't post the performance bond.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next up, consider position on zoning hearing board application Z seventeen dash thirty, five fifty Davisville Road. Mr. Savona.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At the board's request, the administration has listed the application for five fifty Davisville Road for the board's consideration to take a position, whether in favor of or in opposition to this application. For those who are not aware, this is approximately a five-acre parcel of ground located on Davisville Road in the R one zoning district. The property is vacant currently. It was formerly an industrial building. And the nature of the variance request is to allow the building to be used again for what they describe as an industrial purpose. There are a number of adjacent residential property owners who have expressed concerns about the nature of this use. And based on the fact that the board had listed this for action today, I did reach out to the applicant's attorney, Mr. Hecker from Begley Carlin. And I believe that they are, the applicant is amenable to postpone the hearing, which is presently scheduled for Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, I guess it is, in order to give them some time to meet with some of the neighbors and some of the residents in the area, explain the nature of the project, explain the nature of what they want to do with the building, and possibly alleviate a confrontational situation so that we can arrive at perhaps a mutually agreeable reuse of the building. If not, obviously, the applicant's free to proceed with the variance. And under those circumstances, I would recommend that the board authorize my office to attend the zoning hearing board hearing, if necessary, and oppose the application on behalf of the residents. But our sincere hope would be that they can work out an amicable solution.
Okay. So.
I'm really happy to hear that because Mr. McKee and myself have been in contact with Mr. Zamba, who is representing the neighborhood. And I think that the neighbors do have a right to say something before anything is done. And this way, it's not too late, you know, down the road. So I thank the advice of Mr. Savona in guiding us in this endeavor. And thank you very much.
And I want to ask Mr. Savona, just for the board, for the public's edification, this property is zoned R one.
Correct.
That is a conditional use that's there now, correct?
The, well, the use that is there now is not a use. I mean, the property is vacant. It was, it had been subject to some older variances by the zoning hearing board back in the seventies, I think. But the property has not been used for an industrial purpose.
It's the current zoning.
Right. Current zoning is R one. It's, the building is non-conforming, but there is no right to use it. So that's why they're going to the zoning board to try to get permission to do a non-residential use.
Who owns the property at this time?
The owner's name is listed as Burton S. Lifson, L.I.F.S.O.N. But the applicant is an LLC. It's another entity, which I'm not sure exactly who owns that LLC.
And I know Ms. Frescatore and myself have gotten several calls from neighbors that are concerned that, hey, this was an industrial use for years, and we don't want another industrial use behind our home.
Right.
And I couldn't agree more. And I think the rest of the board's in agreement. And that's why this is on tonight's agenda, to basically send someone from Mr. Savona's office to oppose the application on behalf of the board supervisor.
My understanding from talking to Mr. Hecker is this may not be a truly industrial use, but I think they owe an explanation to the neighbors, have a chance to sit down and meet with them and talk about it so that we get some additional feedback about whether what they are in fact proposing is acceptable or not. But.
Now, the township can oppose the, can oppose the variance, but the zoning hearing board can still grant it.
Oh, they could.
Right.
They could. It's always possible. They don't always listen to us.
And if I could, if I could add something, if the zoning hearing board did still grant the variance, you would have a right to appeal.
Correct.
Which is one of the more important reasons to send Mr. Savona or someone from his office there. This is his one and only shot to build a record. So if you ever do go to appeal, they need to have a record to go on.
Correct.
Because I think it's the objective of this board, not to let the neighbors have another industrial use behind their houses.
I agree.
Am I correct with that?
Yes.
So, with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion to consider position on zoning hearing board application Z-17-30, 550 Davisville Road.
Motion.
In opposition.
In opposition, correct. Is there a motion? Mr. Frescatore, second by Mr. McPhillips. Any further comment from the board? Is there any from the public? Yeah, please, come up, Ron. We've waited patiently all night.
Yeah.
The podium's yours, sir.
I told him, he asked me.
Take as much time as you need.
I told him it was a long agenda, but he was willing to wait.
Yes. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Ronald Zamba, and I live at 791 Sweetbrier Drive. The back of my property butts up against CW Industries, or what previously was CW Industry. I, my father purchased the property in 1958, so we'll be celebrating our 60th anniversary living at 791 next year. Over that time, I have a history of good and bad, mostly bad, from CW. Previously, just to give you a little history, the property was owned by the V. Wagger family, which goes way back in Warminster history. They also had developed, originally developed, the Davisville Shopping Center. They sold the property to CW approximately sometime in the 70s, 1970s. We never had a problem. Never had a problem when the V. Waggers owned the property. We never had a problem when they leased it out to the old Fisher and Porter. They were actually using it as an annex. Wonderful neighbors. If we had a complaint, they took care of it. They were there to cooperate and consider the fact that they are a non-conforming use in a residential area. Not only that, but the area directly across Davisville Road in Upper Southampton Township is now parkland, and Upper Southampton does a magnificent job maintaining that property. When CW moved in, they moved in in the middle of the night. They were escaping their facility in Germantown because they were having union labor problems. I don't know how many neighbors had to call the police because they're moving heavy equipment in 1:00 in the morning. No consideration for the neighbors, or the neighborhood, or the township. And that set the tone for the remaining years of their occupancy in that location. They have massive air conditioning units on the top of the building with absolutely no baffling, no control, noise problems like you wouldn't believe. Thank God for Bradley Kirsch, many years ago, when he was a supervisor and also an acting township manager, stepped in and brought us some relief. They actually got them, made an agreement that they had to turn those units off 4:30 when they quit business, and they were not allowed to use them over the weekends. Up until then, they were going 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with absolutely nobody in the place. We now have, the latest insult to injury was when they started bringing tractor-trailers in, which actually ran up onto my neighbor's property because there was not enough clearance for them to be able to turn around. So, it's one problem after another. Now, they want to maintain the building. The building is an eyesore. I mean, you consider this is 100 feet off of Street Road. In other words, it's at the entrance to Warminster Township. And as people come in, enter Street Road, the going up Street Road, what do they see? An eyesore. Now, they may claim that they're going to do improvements. They haven't done any in 40 years. The building is decrepit. It is literally falling apart. You can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. And that's what that building is. It is an eyesore, and it is an eyesore for the neighborhood, and it is negatively impacting the neighborhood. So, I encourage you, and I thank you for being in opposition to their variance. And I understand it's actually a variance on a variance.
Correct.
Now, if they want to turn it into an office building, why didn't they ask for a variance to have an office building? I have been told by people in Warminster Township Administration and also Upper Southampton that a, the variance that they're requesting is the worst possible variance in a residential neighborhood, a construction office. That means they can do anything. They can dump anything that they want behind our homes. And we have no control over anything. So, I encourage you to continue your opposition to this variance. Nothing they have done over the last 40 or so years at that location has justified any faith in their ability to do the right thing. So, I thank you, and I hope you continue maintaining and doing the right thing on your part. That's the only hope we have in improving the township. There are too many problems here as a result of poor zoning decisions made years ago for various reasons. Now is the time to start correcting these problems. So, I thank you, and I encourage you to continue in your opposition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions of me?
Thanks for the history of the property. That's very educational.
Yes. He knows just about it. It's really important, though, for you and your neighbors to get together with their representatives so you can justify and tell them how you feel about this, so you get, you get off the ground on the right start. You know what I'm saying?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. And thanks for contacting us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate it. And thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Both have been very big help.
Thank you.
Okay, questions on the floor? I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ron. Okay, next up is appointments of an EAC member. Do we have a motion for appointment to the EAC?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kenneth Hayes to the Environmental Advisory Council. Obviously, you could see the extent of his resume. He's a hydrogeologist. I think it is a background that is very much needed on the EAC, and I think will be a big asset.
Is there a second for Kenneth Hayes?
Second.
Ms. Frescatore? All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. So, you'll notify Mr. Hayes.
That's my move.
Okay, we're on a professional's report. Township manager's report. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my written report in case there are any questions. A few items. I've been communicating with you about the 2018 budget. I am anticipating completing the proposed budget by the end of this month and having a budget workshop on November 2nd. So, look for more information on that very soon. Want to thank everyone who participated in our annual golf outing. It was a rather wet occasion, so we didn't get 18 holes in, but we gave it, did we last six?
Six.
Some stayed out for nine.
Mr. Schuster was drenched.
Yes. It was not a, not a pretty sight. So, thank you for everyone who participated, who contributed, and just made.
By the way, Park and Rec has offered an eight-hole voucher to those that participated because we only got six in.
That's right. They've been passing those vouchers out. So, thanks again to everyone that did participate. Last night was the first meeting of the municipal complex subcommittee. They elected Mr. McKee as chairman and another member, Mr. Rick Hydeck as vice chairman. They've selected to start meeting in January once a month, and they're going to start touring our existing facilities in the meantime. So, they are up and running. Our conversations are continuing with Spirit for Five Ponds Golf Course and having Spirit take on a larger role over there. The library director search is ongoing. As you know, our library director has announced that she is resigning due to her move out to the West Coast. So, we have a good pool of candidates and look forward to conducting that process. And finally, I also want to give a thank you to Arbutus Biofarm. They had a ribbon cutting the other day, which I was able to attend. It's amazing what you're able to see out in the township there over on Veteran Circle. 40-plus employees that moved over here, mostly from Doylestown, and they're scattered in a few other areas. And what they're doing is research to find a cure for hepatitis B. So, that's happening right here in Warminster Township. You walked in there, there were a few doctors and a whole bunch of PhDs, and you're in there, and you just know you're not the smartest person in the room by far. But it was a world-class facility, and I was very happy to attend the ribbon cutting and wish them all very well. So, hopefully, more, more things to come. So, that is my report for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Does anyone have anything for Mr. Schuster? Okay, move on to solicitors' report. Mr. Savona?
Just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, the couple of items for the board's information. The long pending appeal from Christ Homes for their tax exemption for a portion of their continuing care retirement community property has actually been scheduled for the November trial list. The townships and the county are not active participants in that. It's mostly a fight between the school district and Christ Homes, but it is slowly lurching forward. And usually, when a case is listed on the trial list in Bucks County, it's likely that it will be called in that month, if not that month by December. So, we should have some conclusion to that, short of an appeal, before the end of the year. Shenandoah Woods, as the board's aware, we are moving forward with the execution, the redevelopment authority executed and returned the purchase agreement to the Navy along with $100,000 deposit that's required. That matter is being packaged for the congressional review that is required for 30 days, following which time the RDA and the Navy can move to closing. We had a long discussion earlier today, earlier in this meeting, about arranging for the funds for that transfer. Concurrently, while the negotiated sale process is winding down between the RDA and the Navy, the Navy did authorize the Department of Interior to make a separate conveyance to the township directly of the, what we call the public benefit conveyance, the outer portions of the property that are immediately adjacent to the park. As a part of the original plan for the conveyance of that property, those 26 acres were to be conveyed directly to the township without any cost. So, that has been authorized, and I assume we will see a deed from the Department of Interior within the next few weeks. So, the transfer of the property should be, hopefully, should be completed by year end. As Mr. Schuster said, we have been meeting with the Spirit Golf folks to negotiate the lease terms for Five Ponds. That is ongoing, and hopefully, we will have a draft lease for them to start to review at our next meeting, which is scheduled in a couple of weeks. We did prepare, and the fire department is reviewing, the Act 172 EMS Tax Credit Ordinance. Hopefully, that'll make it to your agenda in a future meeting. That is a little bit different in terms of advertising requirements, so I'm, it does require a 30-day notice and a public hearing before it's adopted. So, I'm hoping to have that review by the fire companies done so we can list it for the November agenda to authorize advertising, and then have a hearing in time to adopt it before the end of the year. Other than that, the remainder of my report was submitted in writing. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Anyone have anything for Mr. Savona? Okay, engineers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick, couple of comments on the capital improvement projects or township projects. We closed out tonight your 2017 paving program, and I know Karen and Aaron from my office have been working with your township staff on the 2018 paving program as far as for budget purposes. So, the last couple of years, the paving program with the, with Eric and Greg and all the staff, I think the road programs have gone really smooth compared to back in the day, and I think it's a really good team effort. So, we're already working with the staff next year on the budget for the road program. And as you guys know, we continue to work on the, on the park projects, both grants, DCNR, and also the RACP. Karen and her staff are working very hard on that. There was some misconception that it's going to be two separate projects for grant purposes or funding. Obviously, they're separate. But as far as permitting design, we didn't want to go through the process twice. So, that is all being done as if it's one project. And for the permitting process, it'll be phased, but you'll be getting, you know, one permit for that. Someone was alluding to that. Everything's going to be permitted separately on the parks, and there's, you know, added red tape and added cost, but that's not the case. Everything will be, try to go through everything permitted under, or approved under one permit. The only subdivision land development project that you'll see, and I think it actually is, it's scheduled for next Tuesday's planning commission meeting, which is listed as 900 York Road. It's actually access off of Norristown Road, but it's a seven-lot, single-family subdivision.
Pinehouse.
No, I always forget the name. For people who recall, that has been through several sketch plans. I have seen officially and unofficially over the last 10 years, a lot of sketches. So, I'm going to be quite clear. This is, this is a nice resolution. I think the residents were heard. The developer heard the concerns of the staff, and I know they went to the zoning hearing board, got relief, and they're requesting preliminary final. It's going to be a private road. It's going to be a no curb sidewalk, more rural setting. The lots are large. So, I, it turned out to be, you know, a pretty good project.
Saving a house.
And they're saving a house, yes, yes. So, that'll be on next Tuesday's planning commission. That's the only schedule I have as far as land development projects. Two other meetings we're waiting for, pre-con meetings, will be for Warminster Express over 440 Street Road, and then also, that's for the car wash. And then Burger King has not, they're ready to go, but they have not asked for their pre-con meeting yet. So, we'll probably do those at the same time. Amanda and Karen will work on that. So, those are the meetings set up, or hopefully, set up in the next month. I just want to make one other comment. Karen, Karen McNair from my office let me know today that we had, we review all shop drawings. Shop drawings are the pipes, the paving mix, the concrete, and we get a lot of complaints over the years over why we're looking at those. Why does, you already approved the plans. Why does the engineer have to look at shop drawings and approve them? And without getting too technical, the last, we just rejected on a large commercial project, I won't name, but the engineer designed the underground basin with underground pipes. They spec, the contractor said, here's, here's the materials we want to use. They submitted without any comments, and after our review, the loading on the pipes was supposed to be a minimum of two feet of cover, and the whole entire site was designed and approved by us, by this board, with six inches of cover. So, between the contractor and the design engineer, no one looked to make sure that they had two feet of required cover on the entire underground facility. That's why we do what we do. Yes, it's private property. Yes, it's been designed and approved, but people don't realize of how many changes when the contractor gets awarded, doesn't go through bidding and review process. And the only checks and balances you have or we have is for us to review the materials list and go through that. We get a lot of pushback on, I know the staff does as well, on concrete, paving and all that. So, Karen, you know, took a lot of heat on that. Might reach Greg or Amanda here in the next couple of days, but they have to then work with a different manufacturer or come up with regrading of the site or somehow to accommodate the cover. And that's, you know, there's where a safety issue, maintenance issue, someone moves in, the parking lot starts collapsing. So, I just want to bring that, it's a big issue, and it's something that's always ongoing at the township administration, our office of complaints of how this township enforces strict standards on private property. And this is where it's nice to share that story, that something was caught that would have caused some major problems down the road. That's all I have.
I have a question and a comment. Steak and Shake. Have we heard back from them?
They are submitting their, they're submitting their building permits shortly, and they're finishing up land development right now, too. So, I would assume by spring they'll be ready to do construction, but a lot of it's internal. So, I'm sure even this winter they can start doing stuff.
Still need to submit one. They haven't resubmitted the final set.
Okay.
But they're working on both aspects right now.
Just a comment I saw on Centennial Road, the stream bank reinforcement project's completed. Looks terrific. Well, it looks good.
Yes, that's, residents were happy?
Yeah, yeah, they're thrilled. Yeah, so, really nice job.
I want to just, two things that you had mentioned. One, because since you mentioned the road pavement and repair, it's, we've done five miles of roadway this year compared to about one per year dating back, God knows what. Is that five times the budget, or is that, is that just, we're that much more efficient?
Well, I, there's a, first of all, we switched to it. I don't know exactly how much we've done in the, in the past. I wasn't happy to look that up. But we've switched to a different methodology. We're doing the paving ourselves. In the past, they contracted out, we contracted the entire.
Well, we did, we did it ourselves, and then we.
Switched.
We shifted gears into stormwater because that was the issue of the day, five years ago, stormwater all over the township. So, we shifted gears out of road paving and had our public works guys doing small, small stormwater projects, including Athan Green was considered to be a million-dollar job that was done in-house for a couple hundred thousand dollars. But also, she's my own steer here, but there's also been an uptick in liquid fuels.
There's been an uptick in liquid fuels, and there was a year or two when the township did not spend all of their allocated liquid fuels. And so, when you don't do that, it just builds up. It's not like you use it or lose it. It builds up, and so, we were able to tap into that. So, for future programs, if you're just going to rely only on liquid fuels, you might see a little bit of a downtick in the amount of mileage that we get out of it, but it's still going to be significantly more than we've done in the past.
Gotcha. All right, well, that clears it up. Thank you very much. And the other one, every time you put on Weiss, I'm going to, I'm going to ask, I mean, what's, any, anything, any information?
I have nothing.
Nothing.
We don't have anything.
Where's our headquarters?
Can we get their attorney, their attorney a call and ask them what's going on?
I can certainly send Amy an email and see if she's heard anything.
Can we get a sign just saying, coming someday this decade, Weiss?
I have to, I have to assume, given the cost of the liquor license acquisition and the fact that we went through the transfer and they've done all that, I have to believe that they are just wrangling with internal timing and schedules.
I've heard this, I've heard that from other areas, that they've encountered similar things. If you do talk to them, I would love for them to put a coming soon.
Aye.
I'm serious about that, too. I mean.
That'd be such a help.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's probably one of the things that we're asked about the most. No one believes it at this point. They don't. I don't blame them. The mythical Weiss. They thought it was an election track.
I think it is mythical now.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Kenner? All right, let's move on then. Township manager announcement of upcoming agenda items?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will be having two meetings next month. As we've said before, the second, November 2nd would be the budget workshop. As we've said before, the second, November 2nd would be the budget workshop. That'll be the only item on that agenda, just strictly about the 2018 budget. On the meeting for the 16th, we anticipate being able to announce the Paint the Plow winner. If you get a chance to see these around town. I saw the one in front of Archbishop Wood today. It was quite impressive. As you saw today, you got a presentation and gave authorization to issue the RFP for financing of the Shenandoah Woods in the Park project. So we anticipate being in a position to make that award. Also, the finalists, or the, the RFP bidders will be before the Pension Investment Advisory Council or Commission for the Defined Contribution Plans. That is occurring next week, I believe on Thursday is when that is next week. And the, hopefully, the Pension Investment Advisory Board will be able to make a recommendation on who to award that plan to. We also anticipate being able to award a mowing contract for 2018 and beyond, a cleaning contract, and of course, the snow removal contract. And as Mr. Kennard already stated, the 900 York Road preliminary final is anticipated to be on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Just have one question. On the Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee, it has been changed to November 9th. Is that correct, Amanda? Okay.
Oh, is that, I apologize. Is that wrong on the agenda?
I just wanted to be doubly sure here. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And move on to the second round of public comment. Any comment from the vast public out there? No? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to Supervisor's comments. Ms. Frescatore?
I would, I just take a moment and thank my fellow board members and all our professionals, our Township Manager, Mr. Schuster, our Solicitor, Mr. Savona, our engineer, Karen and Mr. Kennard, and Amanda for doing such a great job, because, you know, we, we got a lot accomplished tonight, and it's really all about, for me, it's about the quality of life for our residents, you know? And, and I, and I feel that residents are starting to see that, and I think that's a good thing going forward. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Monroe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm just going to actually reiterate something that you talk about quite often on a different topic, but it's, it's about not ignoring health symptoms. I mean, I had somebody in my family that was my mother who tried to ignore chest pains. And, you know, you try to rationalize it out in your mind. You know, she didn't want to go to bed. She didn't want to go to the hospital. Eventually, after some talking to, she, she went, and in the emergency room, she suffered a massive heart attack. So if she, luckily, if you're going to have a heart attack, that's where you want to have one. And she is doing well. She's got a stent now, but if she would have listened to her own head and gone back to bed, she would have died. So I just tell everybody out in the public, and again, I know, Mark, it's something that you always talk about, don't ignore symptoms. It's what's it worth to you and your family? That's all I have.
Thanks, Mr. Monroe. Mr. McPhillips?
With Halloween coming up, wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween.
Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, reiterate that happy Halloween. Also, I want to take a moment and actually ask Kathy to chime in. It's been so long since our last meeting. We actually had the visioning meeting since our last meeting. Did you want to say anything about the visioning meeting?
It was phenomenal. The amount of residents that showed up. We had, what, would you say about 60 residents? And, and a lot of them care about the same, the same things that we care about. And you can take it from there.
Yeah, no, we, we had the Comprehensive Plan Township residents' visioning meeting on September 26th. We had an excellent turnout, and I thank everybody who helped publicize it, Warminster Live, and then, of course, everything that Greg, Amanda, and the staff did. We had a terrific turnout. Boucher and James did a terrific job of running the event. We got a lot of feedback, a lot of interesting feedback, some things that you think you knew about, you know, opposition to this, desire for this, but it really crystallized some things. And I'm eager to have the feedback shared with all of you, once Boucher and James compiles it, because I think, I think it'll be really interesting and help us guide where we're going, not just in comprehensive planning, but budgeting in the future of this township over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years.
I agree.
So, other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate the updates I was getting to, Mr. Crowley. I was down the shore, Mr. Crowley was sending me pictures of the residents' responses and questions, and it was really well-attended, so, good job. And the only thing I have is a happy Halloween. We have a big celebration on Revere Terrace. Please stop by. All the neighbors are out, and I've always been told over the years that I resemble Uncle Fester, so I'll be, I'll be donning my Uncle Fester costume out front of the house, so please do, it's the only time of year where it fits, so please do stop by. And that's all I have, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, meeting adjourned.